We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they are representing an organization or group, and they may have five minutes. So Sean, who sits right next to the podium, will help govern that and give you that. So when you hear his alarm, that's what that means. And please, and as well as commissioners, just step up to the mics so you'll be easily heard by everyone. Appeals of the decision from the Historic Zoning Commission pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws notices hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via a statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own legal, independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. First, I'd like to have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed? Okay. The first is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be noted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Before we get started, are there any items to be removed? Okay.
This month's consent agenda includes 321 50th Avenue North, new construction of an addition and detached accessory dwelling unit; 762 Roycroft Place, an application for demolition; 3809 Whitland Avenue, new construction of an addition; 128 Second Avenue North, new construction of an addition; 112 Mockingbird Road, new construction of an addition and a detached accessory dwelling unit; 424 Broadway signage; 1907 Benjamin Street, new construction of an outbuilding; 1416 Fourth Avenue North, an application for signage; 1516B Ferguson Avenue, an addition, additions; and 402 South 11th Street, new construction of an outbuilding. Staff have reviewed these projects, find that they meet the respective design guidelines, and recommends their approval.
Okay. Any questions to staff about any of the items on the consent agenda? Okay. After open public hearing, after handing consent agenda, does anyone in the public like to say anything about these or regarding any of the items? Okay. Hearing none, closed public hearing. Discussion or motion to approve consent agenda?
I'm going to approve.
Okay. Second? All in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed? Okay. Motion approved. Consent agenda is approved. So is 1613 Eastland still our first one? Nope. 116 Opry Place.
1613 Eastland Avenue has been removed at the request of the applicant.
Okay.
So we'll move on to the next item, which is 116 Opry Place, the Ryman Auditorium. And this is an application to install signage and architectural lighting on additions to the building. The sign will be a 125 square foot electronic changeable copy sign mounted on the north-facing fascia of a new one-story addition to the building that will match an identical sign on the south-facing fascia of the building. That's part of the addition that's currently under construction. The guidelines for signage allow a maximum of 180 square feet of signage for this. The proposed signage is allowed. It's under that maximum. But the guidelines also require that for signs with electronic changeable copy, that no more than 50% of the face be changeable. Also, the guidelines require that signs be, electronic changeable copy signs, be at least 50 feet apart. You can see, in your packets, the floor plan, you can see that these signs are less than 50 feet apart. But because of the way they're located, they won't be visible at the same time. For this reason, because of those locations, staff finds that the locations are appropriate at 45 feet apart, but recommends a modification to the 50-foot requirement with the condition that the sign is reduced to be only 90 square feet, which would be the amount of changeable copy allowed. The application also includes architectural lighting. This is an image here of the front wall of the two-story portion of the addition. And on here, there will be a perforated copper screen, copper screen wall mounted a foot off a black metal wall behind. The screen will be projected on one-foot-long metal standoffs or spacers. The screen wall material was approved administratively as a change to that addition, the addition that was approved by the commission a few months ago. Originally, that screen wall area, the image approved there, was to be translucent glass. But now with the screen wall that you're reviewing today, the request is to have color-changing LED lights strung around the perimeter of the cavity where that screen wall is. The lights backlight the screen and shine through the perforations. Commission has typically only approved architectural lighting that illuminates an architectural feature or signage, but not as an entire wall itself. The proposed lighting would be conspicuous and obtrusive. Staff finds that it would dominate views of the building from the right-of-way. That's the addition under construction, and you can see where the light wall would be. Staff finds that this is contrary to the intent of the design guidelines, as it would have a detrimental effect on the historic character of the building and of the district overall. Staff recommends approval of the proposed electronic changeable copy sign with the condition that the sign be no more than 90 square feet and with a modification that allows two signs to be less than 50 feet apart. The project within, staff finds, would meet the guidelines for signage in the Broadway Historic Preservation Overlay. Staff recommends disapproval of the revision to permit the backlit rain screen, finding that it does not meet Section 2T of the Broadway Historic Preservation Guidelines.
Do you mind real quick, Sean, one more time, that things that are different, is it just the rain screen that's from the last time and the one that you're approving? Are these the two different things that are different?
Mm-hmm. This was what was approved. That whitish area is a translucent, I guess frosted glass wall that stood out from the true wall behind. And I believe that was to be backlit also, although it wasn't quite clear to staff what would be going on with the lighting with the proposed. It's a perforated copper screen wall with color-changing LED lights. And staff finds that as architectural lighting, you know, you might typically think of uplighting. Staff finds that that would be appropriate. But this is, in fact, a different type of feature that staff finds is not in character with a historic building.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions for Sean?
You're recommending 90 square feet. What do they have now, about 120 or so?
125.
So what you're recommending is in the parameters that we established the last time that we went over this? Nothing is out of line except the new copper screen wall and the lighting?
Yes. Particularly the lighting of the wall.
Right.
The material itself would be appropriate. In fact, it has been approved.
But deliberation about the sign and the size of it, has all been kept in bounds?
It goes back to the commission's conversation during the last time it went through. Originally, I think the request was 180 square feet of signage. But the guidelines require that 50% of that be static, and only 50% can be dynamic. So with the new application, we're just going back to the same things that were mentioned then, that effectively you get a 90 square feet of dynamic signage.
So there's no static signage?
That would be up to the applicants. It's not what they've proposed.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Sean. The applicant like to come forward and state your name and address.
Sure. My name is David Powell. I'm an architect with Hastings Architecture, 127 Third Avenue South, Nashville, Tennessee, So we're back, right? Let me start by giving you a summary of what happened last time and where we left off last time and what's happened to the design since last time on the south side, which is the very first page that you're seeing in your packet. What was approved by this group here was 180 square feet of digital sign that was allowed on this side. To give you a point of reference, that would be the sign that you're seeing in this image all the way across that entire black fascia band. So we were approved at 180 square feet. We actually reduced the size to 125 square feet, just aesthetically, and back to the concept of wanting to make sure that this appeared to be integral to the architecture and felt like this was a better solution. So this is 125 square feet and not 180. So if you turn the page to the second page, you'll see what the north side, north and east side looked like previously, the plaza elevation.
Can I ask you a quick question, David? What did you guys originally propose?
259, 49?
Which was? Two sides?
I think it was a wrap.
Was it a wrap?
For the front?
No. It was just the full length and full height of that fascia band. Okay? And it was 250, 260, something like that. We can't remember exactly, but it's significantly more than 180. The calculations limited us to 180 square feet total that we were allowed. 50% of that is the maximum allowed for digital signage. So this group capped it at the 180 square feet, but the modification that was granted was all of that could be digital. Okay? We ended up going less than that, down to 125. But of the 180, only 50% of that is technically allowed, which is 90. And we met earlier with Sean and Robin and the staff and had this conversation with them about this. And so to cut to the chase, we're okay with the 90 square feet on the north side. So we came in with the same 125 square feet. I believe that was our ask and our proposal. And after meeting with staff, after learning of what their probable recommendations would be at 125 square feet, we went back to our client and they approved us, saying that it was okay, if it's okay with you, that 90 square feet is acceptable on the north side, which is part of what we're asking for today. And if I can just take another step back to simplify this, there are two areas we're talking about today. The lighting behind the revised feature wall over the front door and the digital sign on the north side. The north side digital sign has two issues. One is its proximity to the previously approved digital sign, less than 50 feet, and the size. So staff recommendation was approved, recommending approval if we capped it at 90 square feet, which we are okay with. And the discussion about the proximity to the other sign being less than 50 feet, the discussion we had was because they are 180 degrees from one another and they're 45 feet apart, that it meets, for all intents and purposes, the intent of, you know, the spirit of that rule, which is you can't see them at the same time. And they're almost 50 feet apart. So again, separating the two issues, the digital sign portion of this, we're okay with the staff's recommendation of reducing it to 90 square feet. That you can see on the third page, well, I'm sorry, the third page, you can see what 125 square feet looks like. And do you mind giving him one so Sean can see what we're looking at? And the fourth page is what 90 square feet looks like. You can see how it's a shorter sign band. So unless there are any questions about the digital sign, I was going to move on. What's that?
There are two digital signs?
The south side, which is the front page, which was already approved at the last meeting. And now the new proposed sign on the north side.
And you are, you're okay with the nine, but you haven't, you want to talk about the distance between?
Right. Sorry. Oh, you're okay with that, too?
Well, yeah, staff is okay with it. Well, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah. Yeah, staff's okay, but you're not protesting that or not. That's not your issue?
I'm not protesting their recommendation to approve the modification for 40.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Okay. I thought that's what you said, but we kept talking about the 90 square feet. Okay.
Right.
Okay.
It's because the original ask was 125.
Okay.
So we're good with the recommendations for approval on that.
Okay. Good.
So unless there are any questions about that in particular, I was going to move on to the screen.
Okay.
Mr. Champion, you look like you have a question.
What about?
Okay. So, okay. So flipping back to the second page, you'll see where it says Ryman Auditorium over the entry is on a white element. That was white backlit glass. It's on your, should be on your screens right now. If you'll recall, the word, the letters, the logo, Ryman Auditorium, we were not asking for approval. We are finalizing the actual signage portion of this, which we will come back a third time for that ask. I actually have a rendering if anyone wants to see what that looks like. We just missed the window of submitting it. So we'll be back probably next month to talk about that. But the material that was here before and proposed and approved was a backlit white glass, frosted glass, etched glass, but a white glass that was backlit. What we're proposing to change that to now, you'll see on the third page and fourth page, same image, is a perforated copper screen. And the perforated copper screen is held off the back wall in the same way that the white glass was held off the back wall to create a cavity that's illuminated. The details for this, generally speaking, a backlit feature material has not changed. But instead of an illuminated glass panel, it is now uplighting the back wall that is behind a perforated panel. So you're essentially seeing through the perforations to the color or light that is behind. Okay? So if you will skip through many of the middle pages, because those were more about the digital sign, and get to the page that is the pure elevation, it's what's on your screen right now. That shows what this perforated panel looks like, or a series of panels that makes one And obviously, it takes the form of the iconic gabled end of the Ryman Auditorium, the original historic architecture. The next-to-the-last page shows what that looks like in greater detail in perspective from the plaza, looking up at that screen. And you can see the black wall behind the perforations. I'm on this sheet, in case you're wondering. And then the very last page shows two examples of materials. The left picture is a copper anodized product that is in front of a black wall with a cavity, which is very similar to our situation. The right image shows a mock-up of this panel to show the perforation hole sizes. So at the, well, to address the section that was stated as by staff as what is not in compliance, there are four items within Section 2T that I'd like to address one at a time. And this is for lighting. If lighting is installed, it should be concealed or simple and then obtrusive in design materials in relationship to other facade or elevation elements. This will be completely concealed because it's behind the copper rain screen and in front of the black wall, but it's behind the copper rain screen, so it is concealed. Light should be direct toward the facade instead of outward. Building facades may be illuminated through uplights mounted above the storefront cornice. This is above the storefront cornice. It is not facing outward. It is directed toward the facade, the black facade of this composition. And it is an uplight and downlight. Just to clarify, there is a continuous strip along the bottom of this wall, which is still above the storefront entry, and at the top of the wall up at the parapet. There's just two strips. Nothing in the middle, nothing down the sides, just two strips of light, indirect light. Third item is dark metals are appropriate materials for light fixtures. You will essentially not be able to see these fixtures, but we're happy to make them black, if that helps. Concealed indirect or spotlighting is appropriate for exterior signage. Visible fluorescent or incandescent bulbs are not appropriate. We are not using fluorescent or incandescent. These are LED, and these are concealed, although this is arguably not exterior signage, but an architectural feature. So we feel that with this particular section referenced, that we meet all of the guidelines of these four points within this section. Any questions?
You mentioned, there's discussion of copper and then copper anodized. Is the metal itself a, is it going to patina at all, or is it intended to be painted copper and will maintain that coloration?
It is a copper anodized, so it won't patina. So once it's up initially, maintains that color.
That's the color, and it's right.
That's correct.
Very good. Thanks.
David, I would like to know about the color of the lighting and the motion of the lighting, or the timing, if you will.
Yep. You're asking the most important part I left out.
Yeah. Well, I'm looking at your mock-up here. I see different-sized perforations through the copper.
That's right.
And so I'm looking, I'm thinking, I'm assuming that this light is going to move through this copper panel and not just be simply lit at one time? Am I wrong?
You're, well, you hit two things there. One, the perforation sizes are different, which is what gives the effect, the artistic effect of this ghosted, gabled end element here. But the perforations are in a perfect grid in both dimensions. It's just that the hole sizes vary to create that effect. The lighting at the top and the lighting at the bottom will always be the same color, and they will always be static. There is a question about how often we could, or they could change the lights. There is a reason why they want it to be color-changing RGB lights, so it's an infinite number of colors of lights. But the intent of that is not so it can be a disco screen that changes colors continuously. In other words, if there was a particular restriction or stipulation that you decided was appropriate, for instance, no more than eight seconds or no more than once a day, you know, that it cannot change at a particular rate. And that would be fine, because the intent is most definitely not to have something that is fading from one color to another continuously.
Well, that's my key concern.
That's right.
And, you know, we are talking about the Ryman Auditorium here, and I would hate to see it lit up like a Christmas tree every other minute.
Right. Right.
I think that your addition is very well done and very clever, and I applaud it. But, you know, the last facade that was talked about was just a white-lit facade. It was quite tasteful. And so I would, you know, the Ryman doesn't sit on Broadway. It's a little more particular, a little more special. So I think we need to get into this. If it's changing from red to green to blue to purple every two minutes or five minutes, you know, or if they change it for a certain show on a certain night, that's one thing. But if this whole, if the Ryman Auditorium turns into a blinking light, then what are we doing?
Of course, defining what that means exactly is important, but I can tell you that the effect of it being a blinking light is most definitely not what they want to do. So whatever we need to do to define that and say that it's, you know, avoids that, they would be perfectly fine with that.
But I think we should do that so that we can get the best product for the client and city.
Any more questions to the applicant? Do you have something else?
Yeah, one more thing. If you'll recall, the requirement for a digital sign, and it's changing, it can't be any more frequent than eight seconds. The north sign will be just like the south sign, the north sign that's the new proposed sign would be that way. But still, eight seconds is quite a bit. If you're talking about a screen that's also changing every eight seconds, they would want to avoid that. So if it's every five minutes or it's every 24 hours, you know, but it would be perfectly fine to avoid something that's sort of too much of a color-changing dynamic, if that makes any sense.
Yes.
And am I assuming that you're coming back in to put signage on this wall?
That's right. So if you, you know, I'm happy to pass around what that signage looks like on top of this, just so you have an idea. It's not part of our formal request today.
Sure.
Because we missed the window, but you can get an idea of the scale, if that helps, of what we're thinking.
I would say we'll wait on it.
Yeah. I just know that, I mean, now we're adding different elements and it becomes more complicated. You just need to keep in mind, if we are going to put some restrictions, that there's going to be more.
Mr. Chair.
But we'll have to just listen to that when it gets here.
Yeah. I mean, they're proposing more.
Mr. Chair, I missed the last meeting where, I was at the first but missed the last. And if it pleases the commission, I think there are multiple issues at work here, and typically, we don't accept new information. But I think to go three-quarters of the way, a quarter of the way in one meeting, three-quarters in the next, and then a quarter in the next, in total, my personal feeling is that to get an idea of the total effect so that we don't leak it out is more helpful in establishing a point of view and a reading on the regulation.
Well, my only concern is unless staff has had a chance to review it, I'd hate to put them in an awkward position where we're...
I'm not suggesting we approve the signage. I would like to see the concept in total would be my only argument for our consideration to see additional material.
Well, Robin, how often, I mean, how much has staff been able to see this? Have you had a chance to review it or not?
Well, now, as we've said before, that's not a good idea, because we have not had a chance to review it. But in this case, you're not being asked to review it, but you might want to see what the end result will be once, assuming it was approved at some point, what the end result might be. I mean, I could see how that might be valid and useful to you, but you're not trying to rule on that signage today. Does that help?
I think Ben's point is that we keep sort of inching in and we keep adding and changing and...
Okay. Well, I will allow it, but just, I don't want to start talking about, these letters are too big or something, because if we get all these...
And I concur with Commissioner Tibbs, and I can... And I concur with Commissioner Tibbs, and I concur with Ben as well. But this really could put staff in a real rock and hard place.
But I'll allow us to look at it, but let's just, if you guys just hold your comments, I don't want to get all into the signage.
That's the word.
Okay, okay.
Can I ask, why, before you do that, why are we inching in? I mean, why haven't, hasn't all of this been turned in at the same time for approval?
The north sign is a new, a new ask from the Ryman, and it came after the last meeting.
I understand that, but I mean, now we've got the north side, we've got the rain screen, and then we're going to have the thing, why these last three things didn't all come in together, to see what the, really, the north side and east side look together?
Right. Quite bluntly, it's because of, well, our submittal was due right after the holidays. We had to get everything to staff. And the design was all approved internally by the Ryman, except for the logo, which you can imagine would be quite a process to go all the way up and back down the food chain on the logo itself. So we didn't get approval on the logo until after we submitted to staff. But as you might have noticed in the construction pictures, we're really far along, and so time is of the essence for something as major as this rain screen wall, which is a part of the architecture. And LED lighting is, of course, a part of the electrical, and they're out there doing this, you know, right now. And so needing to know as soon as possible on the architectural elements was more important than waiting for approval on the actual signage, which, again, we had as part of, in fact, we debated whether to include it in the submittal, just like we did the white glass version, says Ryman Auditorium, and that was the intent, but it was always acknowledged as not part of the ask. It was just trying to wait for the final approval. So we debated whether to include it as part of this package or not.
Well, you can pack, go ahead.
A question. I normally don't raise questions to the board. It's you who normally propose questions to me. But I want to make sure that I'm clear on what it is that the board is reviewing at this point, because you have an application that has been submitted and has been reviewed that is currently before you, that you've got to vote up or down. Help me, if someone can clarify for me what you would be considering about the information that has not previously been submitted, and would that work into what your decision is? Or do you anticipate that it may have an impact on what your decision is today? For instance, that you would perhaps impose some type of conditions based on their future ask? If that's the case, then that gives me a little bit of concern, because that particular piece is not before you. So I'm just trying to make sure that I'm clear on exactly what it is that the board sees as its need to see that information. I understand it would be helpful to kind of know what the end project is, but since it's not before you, I'm just trying to make sure, so that I can help you navigate that as best I can as I listen to the presentation.
As I made the request, my concern is to intent and rhythm and the total effect that this design element has. It certainly is unique, and I get the vignette concept. In reviewing a changeable lighting, it's unique in that you've got a changeable lighting effect that is uncommon, certainly something uncommon before this board. And I think, from my point of view, so many uncommon and incongruous elements go to, we can't undo an approval to something submitted in the future, and because this is unique, the total picture would be helpful to, just to know kind of what we're getting into. I don't think it's going to be vastly different than this, but my concern, I guess, goes to the end towards approving this and then adding yet, you know, another icing-on-the-cake sort of thing. And for whatever reason, it's, I don't think it'll be offensive, but I would prefer to see the entire picture. Given, yeah, given the applicant's, that time is of the essence for the applicant, and this is a significant building, I understand all those factors. I don't want to put us in a pickle, but seeing the total intent would certainly be helpful from my, I think I know what it is, but I don't want to project that onto the project.
Well, let's just go ahead and get it, and just remember, and I'll keep a hold that we just don't, we're not going to talk about the letters.
Okay. I have another question. Okay, on the first sheet of the additional information, where you've got the Ryman Auditorium sign down on the facade of the addition, was that, did we approve that in the first submittal? That signage?
Yes, the sign in the board form concrete wall, you can actually see it down on that picture there, too. That was part of the original approval.
On this one?
Yeah, it's shown there on white letters. It doesn't have that at this point, but, yep.
That was approved in the first submittal?
Yeah, that's like 26 square feet or something. It's not very large.
David, can you help me understand the concept of the color wall? Is it sheets of color? Is it just this ghost image of the gable? I mean, what's the concept of it? I have a little hard time understanding what, you change colors? I can't, I'm having a hard time visioning that.
Right, so knowing that the color occurs behind the screen, it really has this reverse or figure-ground effect from day to night. So in the daytime, it's all about the copper color with holes. And at night, it's more about those, the copper goes dark, is in shade now, and it's what's behind that goes to color. Now, given the height of this wall at 24 feet, the outcome is going to be that there's a gradation from the top to the middle and from the bottom to the middle. And so it's a little bit more of a subtle glowing effect that occurs from the top to the bottom. But keeping in mind, it is not a continuous line of color, or even white for that matter, in either direction, because it's continuous behind the perforated screen. So it's only continuous in what you can see through the holes.
Is there an image that you have this ghost image every time, and you're just changing colors? Or it's just, you've got maybe a green one?
The image of the, that ghosted image of the Ryman gable is always evident. The color that is the background is what would change colors.
So there'd always sort of be this white outline of the gable, and then the other stuff would change, the other colors would change, or?
Right, but when we say change, it isn't intended to be continuously changing. It is a static color or white that then can change based on a frequency that you guys feel is appropriate. But I think you have to envision this as a static color, and then decide if it can be changed color, and if so, how often? It could be by season, by day, by week, by, you know.
I have one other question to Richard's comment. I do not mean to add fuel to the fire, but when you talk about all that these lights can do, let's say Widespread Panic comes to play the Ryman one weekend, are we going to put band logos up on this wall? I mean, what worries me here, David, is this, I understand what you're getting at, but I believe it's being left just a tad bit vague. So are we going to see a WP stamped on the...
But you can't do that. I mean, it is literally like taking, you know, a tube of light at the bottom and a tube of light at the top. You can't spell anything out. You can't do any images at all.
Well, thanks for putting these, thank you.
Okay, it's totally indirect light, completely. And one other point that I think is important, Widespread Panic comes, it's the digital sign that is the active sign, which is why I keep saying it's so important to recognize how chaotic that would be visually if we were asking for something that was a big graphic or continuously changing. Now, this is static, that brings a calm sophistication to the actual entrance relative to this digital changing advertisement board.
Would the, cut my mic off. Would the letters, if you were to put letters on that screen, would they be backlit? Or is it just, are you adding lights to those letters if they were, have letters?
Good question. So the first thing that the image that was passed around represents is where we want the letters and the size of the letters. And part of that is what's appropriate in our mind, but the other is keeping within what is the allowable square footage of signage on a particular facade, okay? Now, so that ask won't be a modification to having more signage on this particular size. It will be within what's allowed. The lighting itself, right now, they are backlit channel letters. So we'll have lighting in it, but not direct light. And I believe that that is allowable as well, right? So, and again, we're not here to approve that, but just trying to give you a picture of the concept of that, that it would be backlit channel letters.
Okay, any more questions to the applicant? All right, thanks, David.
You bet.
At the end, if you need to make rebuttal, you can for two minutes.
Okay.
Can I have a last question for David?
Yeah, sure.
Instead of us trying to put an arbitrary time on when the lights can change or whatever color, is there a specific request coming from Ryman on that that we should consider? Or is there any guidance there?
Well, I, my thought is eight seconds, because that's what is tied to, nothing else, this can't be tied to anything else that's in the regulations, and it's not really the same as that, but there is no other time duration for color changing. And so that gives them as much freedom to do whatever they feel appropriate, but also limits it to, and ties it to a number that's in the regulations. But I also know that their intent is to not have it changed that frequently, which is why, like, we're open to the reducing to 90 square feet on the size of the sign, we're open to discussion if we need to limit it to a greater time between changing lights. So I think the official ask would be eight seconds, but I'm just letting you know, the door is open for making that a greater time between.
Do you guess that they come in and they propose the letters to propose a time for that, and thus having the discussion? I just, I mean, eight seconds, that's a lot of activity and light changing. I mean, you've got the scrolling sign, and then you've got the light changing.
Well, it's not scrolling. Just to make sure we're clear, it's eight seconds, static.
But it is changing, and if both of them are changing, that's a lot of activity. And I just, to me, to me, that sort of cheapens the way this looks, and the concept is wonderful. But I think changing the light, especially if it goes pink and purple and, you know...
We could say 24 hours, you know?
Well, I'm just, I'm thinking...
We've got some deliberation. I think we're capable.
Yeah, let's see what we come up with. Let's see what we come up with. All right, thanks, David.
You bet.
Open public hearing, anyone that would like to speak regarding this project, if you'd come forward and state your name and address. Okay, seeing none close over hearing, we get to deliberate.
I have a question for staff. As you were challenged to tie this to a particular guideline, I'm not, was there more discussion than this particular line item in the guidelines as to the staff's consideration of this as a unique building element?
We looked at the section for lighting, of course, and we looked at the past decisions. And whenever lighting of a building has been allowed, it has been just to light up specific architectural features, maybe a pilaster, maybe a cornice, not an entire wall. And staff felt like with now four electronic signs and an entire wall lit up, whether it's color changing or not, that that might be just too much for a national historic landmark.
I think what we probably want to, what I want to consider here is, as well-done and forward-thinking as this is, this is a more special place than most in our city, in the south and in our region. And when we, when I think of signage, I've heard horror stories about it, especially down on Broadway, and how high they can be, how quick they can blink, this, that, and the other. This sits off Broadway. It's very special. And so I think that, I don't know the answer right now, but I don't want to leave this detail vague. I think, I think we need to know. So that's my opinion.
Why don't we, let's talk about the rain screen specifically. Let's jump right into that, and then if we need to talk anymore about the other one. What are you guys' thoughts? So you're saying you want to definitely not leave the lighting perchance. Any other comments about that? Let's just focus on that.
I just wanted to jump in one little thing, just to make sure it was clear. The rain screen itself was administratively approved, so it's really just the lighting that you're looking at.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I, the rain screen light...
And I didn't mean to mislead you. I was talking about the rain screen.
Oh, okay, okay.
I was, but I want to know what's going to happen with that thing.
Go ahead, Ben.
Forgive if this gets a little esoteric, maybe not the right word, but I mean, looking at it in its total, is what is it? I think of some of, in reading the guidelines and trying to understand intent, what I think is there in place is to try to avoid the one-upsmanship of the fan where the guys like, you know, and somebody puts up the flags, and then the next person, there's this continuous look at me sort of architecture, or not even that, like do-to-dos that are out in the street or just trying to draw your attention, and pretty soon, it's just, it's all, it's noise, and, you know, the one-upsmanship just, you know, continues on down the street. And so that, to me, is what's certainly to be avoided, especially on a national historic landmark. And being sensitive to the staff's opinion about that, I guess I want to, in deference to the importance of this site, this allusion to, you know, to the past, or in some ways, the architect's vignette, to kind of pay homage to what is the historic portion of this, given that they need more space, they need to be able to put more program on the site, so an addition has to happen, and they put it on the side where it's already, you know, there's already addition to it, and you've obscured the historic, the old historic facade. I don't have a problem, I guess, with the vignette and the lighting in concept, but the more it changes, the less it is about the building and lighting, and the more it is about a sign in concept or drawing attention to the place. And trying to strike a good balance there is certainly something I think we need to be deliberate about, and that something that is blinking and flashing is maybe not to be, is not desirable for this particular location.
I agree, Ben, and the fact that, you know, we've already approved that one sign, you know, that whole panel has already been, they can do that now. So if, in theory, you would see that every day, I mean, one thought would be, you could change the light every 24 hours, and you basically get the same concept as having that original backlit panel, because you kind of would see it once a day, and it's sort of the same. But I think that may start avoiding what our concerns are about, you don't want to see it change. I think that's the main thing, you just don't want to see it change. And it'd be okay if one day it made one color, I'm not even sure, you wouldn't even know it would change colors. You have to be pretty astute to pick up and change color.
Well, probably Christmas Day would be really...
But it's like, as long as we don't really see it, or if it's not seen, that may alleviate some of the problems, or, but I like the concept. And again, they can put that white panel, you know, right now up there, so.
That makes sense to me as well.
Yeah, so are we having a motion then for, any more discussion? I don't want to rush it to you guys, but...
I see. Are we just deciding on one?
No, we're gonna, we have to approve both of these, but the staff recommended approval of the first one, and we just have to, they didn't recommend approval of the second part of it.
I have a question for staff.
Yeah, go ahead.
Please, please. Robin or Sean, this has been such a long conversation. The moving signs are within approvable parameters, correct?
If you agree with staff's recommendation, you're granting one modification, and that's the distance between electronic signage.
That's good enough for me. So the only real thing that is this... So the only real thing that, is this, is this perforated wall?
Is the lighting behind the wall.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All the same thing.
Put the, put the glass backlit as well. I mean, on the first proportion.
The way we understood it was that it was interior, so you didn't even review it. And that may be our fault for not asking good questions. It was our understanding that was lighting inside the building.
Oh, okay.
And, and we didn't know that it was going to change colors or anything at that time.
Well, maybe my question is for David then. Can we clarify what is going to be lit behind this perforated side somehow? Because we were talking about eight seconds to 24 hours, green light, red light, white light.
It seems like that's the heartburn. Let's just say 24 hours.
Okay.
The official request is 20, to be able to change colors every 24 hours.
Okay. And what about the colors? Or, you know, you were going to do the, the gable behind it? Was that not correct?
No, 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 no. Yeah, so, I'm sorry, this is so confusing.
I know it's confusing.
The, the lighting, everything except the color is the same, no matter what. It is a strip of light at the bottom and a strip of light at the top, and it is a wash in both directions, and that doesn't change. And you can't make it change dynamically or create a letter or an image, or it is like holding a flashlight at the bottom and a flashlight at the top. It is what it is.
Okay.
The question is, how often can we change colors?
Yeah.
And I think if it makes everybody feel better, 24 hours would be perfectly fine with us.
Okay.
Does that help? And so you're, back to your original question, what is it lighting? It's lighting the back black wall.
Yeah, I get that. I get that. But when I, when I look at your plans, I mean, there's so much transparency through the additions, and we have the movable signs. I mean, we're, this, we're going to light this thing up like a candle.
Yeah.
So the reason, and the reason why I'm harping on this one wall is, and you just answered my question, I want to know the capability of the lighting, because I don't want to see the front saw of the rhyme and lit up like a pinball machine.
Neither do I.
Good.
I completely agree.
The rain screen will help that.
Completely agree.
The copper screen will help that.
I'm satisfied. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Do you have a question, Ben? Or I'll see your hand near the thing. Okay. All right. So do we want to try the motion again?
I will try the motion again. I will move to, move approval on staff recommendations on the 90-foot, on the ask of a new changeable copy sign, being 90 feet, 90 square feet, and agreeing that it be within 45 feet or at 45 feet of the next sign. Some change from 50 feet to 45 feet, and the sign being 90 square feet.
That's good.
Also move approval on the lighting as described by the applicant behind the copper perforated panels, with the, with the contingent being, or the stipulation being, the light cannot change color more than once every 24 hours.
Awesome. Okay. We have a, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd, I guess for, for the record, to make sure, in tying this back to the guidelines, I, I think based on the applicant's description, or I'd like to add to the, to it that, based on the applicant's description, we not find that the lighting is obtrusive in design or materials, and that it is directed towards the facade, not outward, finding that it meets those, those guidelines in particular.
Okay. That's noted. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Motion carries. Thank you. Is it still 1515 McKinney?
Okay.
1515 McKinney Avenue, as you see here, is currently a vacant lot. It was previously the site of a non-contributing house, I guess. The non-contributing house was approved for demolition by staff last year. The context of the area is peculiar in that all of the houses on the block, I'm pretty sure all of them are non-contributing, and the lots are 60 feet wide, not the typical 50-foot-wide lot that you see elsewhere in the district. The new house will have, oh, sorry. So the proposed new house will have a form similar to that of a one-and-a-half-story bungalow with a side-gabled roof, a shed dormer, and a shed-roofed porch. The porch will be 40 feet wide, with the main house, main facade of the house being 42 feet wide. Side bays on each side pull the full, total width out to 46 feet. And the height of the roof would be nearly 30 feet tall from grade. Because the lot is wider than the typical lot, staff finds it may be appropriate to have infill wider than, that you would normally see on a historic house. However, staff finds that the proposed width is too great relative to the width of the size of the lot. Additionally, because the context is largely non-contributing, staff looked beyond this immediate context in reviewing compatibility, excuse me, compatibility and height. Staff find that it is appropriate for infill to be taller than these adjacent houses, because they're nonhistoric, but finds that the proposed height is greater than is typical of historic houses nearby. With the height reduced by two feet and the width reduced to 40 feet, staff finds that the project would meet Section 2B1A and 2B1B of the design guidelines. Staff also found that this front dormer on the, on the, the dormer on the front slope is not compatible with the overall bungalow form of the house, as it's essentially a full width dormer. Staff suggested perhaps two separate dormers, each no greater than one-third of the overall width, would be more appropriate for, for the form of the building. Additionally, that, that front dormer there stacks over the primary first-floor wall below. Staff also recommends that that dormer be pushed back two feet from the wall below. The orientation, proportion of rhythm and rhythm of openings meet the guidelines, and with staff approval of roof color, windows, doors, porch, floor, steps, paving, staff finds that the other, the known materials would meet the design guidelines. And staff would also want to approve, or need to approve, the location of HVAC, paving, and other pertinences. And in summary, staff recommends approval of the proposed infill with conditions that the height is reduced by two feet, that the width of the building is reduced to 40 feet, that staff approves the color of the roof and the material of the windows, doors, porch, floor, steps, and paving, that the front dormer be divided into two dormers, no greater than one-third the total width, that there is a walkway connecting the front porch to the street, and that the HVAC mechanical units be on the rear or side facade, but beyond the midpoint of the house. And meeting all of those conditions, staff finds that this proposal meets the design guidelines for the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Overlay.
Okay. Thanks, Sean. Any questions for Sean? Okay. If the, you have a question?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Is there any information given on the, it appears that both the front and the back porch are kind of divided with a solid wall of some design. Is there any additional information? I imagine that would be a clamber sort of partition there to complete the separation.
It looked, I didn't read it that way. It looked like a, a wider column, a double column. It is showed with a dashed line there across the floor plan, certainly, but the elevation, if that was going to have a wall, it should be shown. The fact that it didn't, I took it to not mean that. That certainly should be added as a condition, that there not be some sort of wall there.
I, I only ask because I think there's, there's some separation, well, A, there's practical separation issues between occupants for privacy, and, and B, there's, you know, this isn't viewed, this, this house isn't going to be viewed in elevation, and, and so what, what that looks like, I guess, is, is kind of key from the street, especially the backyard, maybe not as, as important, but certainly in the front.
And we can make sure we can ask the applicant that. If the applicant would come forward and state your name and address. Lynn?
Hi, I'm Lynn Taylor, the designer of the house. We can reduce the height. I thought the owner, the builder was told he could do 30 feet, so I went to 30 feet. So the width of the building, this block is more of a rectangular-shaped house, like a brick ranch facing front, so I felt like it'd be a little wider. Also, too, the width is 42 feet with the two-foot bump outs. And in the past, that hasn't been a problem. That is actually, a house, when you walk, go down the street, is actually felt, the width of it is felt by the front facade and not the total of the bump outs. So I felt like the 42 feet was fine. The houses are duplexes, so it is narrow, and we're trying to get as much as we can in that, you know, width. And then I inset everything as much as I could, making, changing up the facade and breaking up the space. The builder would like as much width as he can get. There is a partition firewall, Ben, on the front porch and the back porch. I know people are, are building things without that, but as I look at the firewall, it, fire could start on the porch attic and just jump right over to the next unit. And so I'm trying to divide the porches with a two-foot, two-hour firewall all the way up to the deck. That is on me as a designer and, and my liability, so I want that wall there. And Sean, when you're reading drawings, sometimes things that are way back or beyond aren't shown on that, but it is shown on the floor plans. So it does, also helps with separation, but that's not why I'm doing it. The firewall, if I hadn't remained to take it off, I will put y'all's name on the drawings as much as I can, because I think it's a liability issue. I don't know or care what other designers are doing. But Ben, you may be able to shed, shed some light on that, since you're a commercial architect person, so. And then the dormers, I was driving around East Nashville yesterday, and you know, if you go around and look at all the different dormers, and I was in Edgefield, East End, Lachlan Springs, dormers set back different ways. A lot of them will sit on the wall, some of them will sit back two feet, four feet, or six feet. Some of them sit out front. I don't, I designed this house here, and it sits on the wall. This actually won an award. And these, these houses are in Edgefield, and you know what? I kind of doubt that I'd actually be able to design a house just like this today, because I think y'all would make me make the dormer smaller. And these are historic houses. And this one here sets out, I mean, it sets out past the wall. So there's no consistency about that. I mean, it's set, the walls, dormer walls sit front, back, all over the place. And this house here is a brand-new house, and I would like for someone to tell me whether this sits on the wall or is out front or out back. And I think it's visually impossible to tell. And I don't know if y'all want these or not. I don't want to move the wall back because of egress windows, getting out of the bedroom. I don't feel like it's necessary architecturally for the historic neighborhood. I can reduce the width of it. The reason I connected them was, again, because of the firewall. I'm going to need to get about eight feet between each dormer, and then that's going to leave me whatever it is, either the, the percentage of dormer space. I would rather someone just tell me a number. I mean, I went through this with a dado and had to go back and forth, is this right, is this not? Because they, the staff had to approve the number, whatever the number is. And we get into these percentages, and you're just making it more difficult, I think, for the designers, the builders, and the homeowners to actually understand. So as far as the dormers, I can break them up. I'd like to leave the wall where it sits, because it has been done before in the neighborhoods, and I don't think it's a problem. What else? And then I would like some clarification on the width of the house as far as the two-foot bump outs. Does that count or not count in the width? Because if it counts, then I'm going to just delete them and just go with the width, because they're, they're not going to go with, what is it they want? 40 feet and come in to 36, if my math is correct, and then bump back out to 40. So they either count or they don't in the width, and they're going to be gone if the total width we can do is 40, just because we're going to have to have that other two feet. So that's my comments. And I haven't had time to get back with Sean. I just have not had time to get back with him on these, so I apologize for that.
So, so you're okay to, the height's not a big deal, the width, you'd like the 42 feet, but you want clarification on if the bump outs count. You're, I guess you're okay with the color deal. And the dormer, you have issue with the dormer, and everything else you're okay with, based on these?
Right. I'd like to leave the dormer where it sits, just because it's been done. It's, and as a matter of fact, so as a matter of fact, on these dormer situation, I really think that everybody needs to go and relook at the dormers. There's a house at 800 Shelby Street. I believe that's the address. I've got it up on Google, looking at the roof. It's a side-to-side gable, and it has a full dormer, gable front dormer, and I think it's either sitting on the wall or out front. So, I mean, when people were building houses back then, they didn't adhere to like a two-foot setback and that's it, or a two-foot front of the wall, that's it. They were all over the place. And I feel like we're trying to, the staff or the commission is trying to like, say, they're only here, and that's where they are. But that's not true. So I would like to bring that up as far as the dormer situation.
Any questions to that?
I do. On the dormer width, Lynn, I'm, I'm, just, just a guess, the dorm, the total dormer width looks to be, I'll say 34 feet-ish in its total width as a shed. Is that, do, are, do you have in, in your paperwork there an example that kind of shows a shed dormer all the way? I mean, just my first blush in looking at this, not having read the staff's comment, that seems wide, I guess.
The dormers, I think, is four feet from each side. And, and the reason to be able to get the square footage upstairs, you know, it's, it's the square footage on the width. The only one that I can think of now, I swear, I know there's a dormer that goes all the way across somewhere in the neighborhood, but I only noticed this yesterday, because I started noticing on Victorians and Craftsman that the dormer sit on the wall, out in front, out in back, and then I started looking on Google Earth this morning. So the one on Shelby does go all the way across as a gable dormer, but not a shed dormer, which the gable dormer is actually more in your face than a shed dormer. So if we needed to bring the dormer width in and reduce the width of it four feet, like take two feet off each side, and you all would be okay with that, the builder would be ecstatic over that. I mean, as long as also, I mean, Brett is here with the neighborhood, so we had a discussion, and we talked about so many things. I'm not sure exactly, some of the things he was okay with, we talked about, and some not, so.
I'm, in, in just, I'm struggling with, maybe not struggling, it, it's a lot of, in terms of width of house, it's a lot of house that is, doesn't make any, you know, it's not trying to not be a duplex. It, it's a duplex, and it's certainly permitted by, by right. I, I think that there's a complete shed dormer all the way across. In terms of ease of construction, I don't disagree with you, but rhythm of openings and, and just proportion on the front, it's, it, I'm, 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 I think I'm seeing the staff's point, and that too would be more individual, and I think would, would be a little bit easier to tell that we're a duplex, and that we're trying to be a duplex. But I, I just wanted to hear your take on that. Thank you.
Well, it would, I mean, could everybody consider reducing it by four feet width?
Okay. Any more questions? Okay. And if at the end you need to do a rebuttal at two minutes after the end, you're welcome to after the public talks.
Okay.
Okay. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project, say your name and address.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brett Withers, 1113 Granada Avenue. I'm the immediate past president of the Neighborhood Association. For this particular project, it's in, and this block is an area that does not have a lot of historic context. There is a circa 1855 house on the corner, and probably, I think, a lot of this was potentially their land that, over time, they have sold off from that property and can sort of continue to do that. So that's why this particular area, most likely, if I were guessing, would remain vacant in the center of our neighborhood for in the center of our neighborhood for a period of time until the 40s or the 50s. So, indeed, it is an area that it does not have a lot of historic context on this block per se. As you're coming down McKinney Avenue toward this, there are a lot of historic houses, and in fact, some very tall historic houses. And if you were approving an infill house on the 1300 or 1400 blocks, a full two-story would be appropriate. On this particular block, there's not a lot of context. But also, the street itself narrows quite a bit. There are not sidewalks, and just the feel of that street is a little bit more intimate right now. And I know that we're setting new precedent for that area, but to go with something that appears as a full two-story, which this sort of does, is probably a little overpowering to set a precedent just yet. We may get there with other decisions that you render going forward. But the, the feedback from the neighbors was that, the main concern was with the height of the building overall. It is a little bit taller than the historic context, even on those 1300 and 1400 blocks, and so the neighbors were interested in having the height reduced generally. And the other main concern, as the commissioners, as you have discussed, is the front dormer itself, the amount of wall space that appears vertically oriented toward the street is a concern to the neighbors for what makes it appear more as a traditional, like a straight-ahead two-story. And so, the neighbors were interested in, in addition to reducing the height, doing something to reduce the massing of that dormer. So, the width of the house, as staff had mentioned, the lots are 60 feet wide, certainly with a lot of our duplexes. On our 50-foot lots, you can get very narrow floor plans. I've been in some of those buildings. This is an opportunity perhaps to allow a wider structure than context, which has been requested. That is not something that the neighbors have expressed a concern about. And so, the, the staff recommendations, I think they're all good, but if I were to prioritize them, the, the first priority of the neighbors would be condition one, which is to reduce the height by two feet. And the, the second priority would be to reduce the dormer. If, if that is splitting it up or if it's making it more narrow, either one of those, I think, would be acceptable as long as you're able to reduce that wall space that fits, that faces the street. Either one of those scenarios would be fine. The width of the building, if it were a little bit wider, and if that makes this a feasible project for the applicant and potentially a better product for our new neighbors, that is something that our, our neighbors are probably willing to, to exercise discretion on at the, at the pleasure of the board. And I have never heard a comment from our neighbors about the wall dormers, if they sit in or not. I think the porch roof in this case sort of envelops the wall dormer, and it's not as noticeable that it's a wall dormer as it is in some other cases. But whatever discretion you have there, you know, please just prioritize the, whatever makes reducing the height of the building feasible for the applicant. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any others? Okay. Anything else? Any rebuttal, Lynn? You're good?
Just one. This is a one-and-a-half story. It's not a two-story. I just want to clarify that because sometimes things get called a two-story when there are one-story, and all the living is under the attic.
Okay. One-and-a-half. Gotcha. Okay. Closed public hearing, discussion?
I'm assuming that, Sean, the 42 width from side to side of the very front does not include the bump outs at the back. So, the 40 feet is, we're reducing the front, which does not include the bump outs. Is that correct?
Those bays that are at the, the top and bottom of this image, the codes department includes them in the, the width of the building when it, as it pertains to setbacks and the overall width. So do we. So, I see the total width of this building as being 46 feet. Staff is saying that it should be reduced to 40 feet.
Wow. Okay.
Whether that involves eliminating, reducing the width and eliminate it to 40 and eliminating the bump outs, I mean, that...
Maybe we can start looking at just the, kind of go one by one here. The height going down to two feet, anybody want to discuss anything about that? Maybe we're okay with that?
Yeah, I think that's good. They've agreed to that.
And looks like the applicant's okay, and the neighborhood's interested in that, too. Okay. So, the width, so the 40 feet would...
Maybe there's a compromise there, given the feedback from the neighborhood, sorry, feedback from the neighborhood. And maybe we consider 42 or something like that as a, some, some kind of compromise.
Yeah. Ben? As, as we look at that compromise, I think the house is improved by breaking up, if you go skinny, you know, there's no delimitation to the applicant of, well, there is, but not, not in, in the context that we're speaking of. If you reduce it by three, you're going to get deeper. And so, then, then you get a side elevation that is longer and less interrupted likely. And I think without the side bump outs, you get, the form of the house as viewed from the street is affected and probably less good. We've seen some, a couple of meetings ago, it seemed to go on forever and ever. And so, I, I would be cautious. The unintended consequence of narrowing this one by too much, and the applicant kind of, in their frustration, hacking off of an appendage, might not be a desirable result. So, I just, it's up to the applicant to come up with something that, you know, that works, but just be careful what you wish for, I guess.
May I add one clarification? I think Mr. Alexander said this, but just to, to say it again. What the guidelines require is that the rhythm of the street match the historic context, not necessarily the width. But the width is one of the ways we look at it, and that's why Mr. Alexander is explaining the width compared to the width of the lot as well. And so, this is, whatever you decide here is setting a precedent for this block, since there is so much that's non-contributing. And the 40-foot width or the, that we'd recommend, it is already a compromise over what you see historically right, right around there. So, just wanted to point that out. And that we would add that condition, that there not be a wall on the front porch. In the past, you have not approved walls on the, in the middle of a front porch like that.
But it, it is by what you're measuring, though, Sean, is from, you want, it's, not you want, but it's from 46 feet to 40 feet, including the bump outs, right? I just want to write that down.
That was staff's recommendation, but obviously, that's up to the question.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
So, just to put that very simply, is basically lose the bump outs, right? And then we're back at 40 feet.
The house measured 42 feet without the bump out in, in the, in the front.
I think it's 46, so it would be taking the whole thing down.
And Mr. Alexander can correct me, but I believe in this block, they're all wider. Isn't that correct? It's not just this one individual lot?
That's correct. They are all 60 or 61 feet. The majority of the historic context, the next block over, the block, you know, through, most of the district overall, or the neighborhood, I should say.
I'm, I'm just afraid that we reduce it by as much as six feet, that we are, we've reduced the height, then, but now that we're reducing, it's going to be really tall and, appear tall and narrow.
What's on the, is there an approximate? You may not have measured this. In terms of a 50-foot wide lot, the, the amount of frontage or average frontage, or the greatest amount of frontage in a 50-foot wide lot in the district?
Yes, I, I did look at that. Typically, on a 50-foot lot, houses are averaged, of course, there are some high and some below, but 33 feet, which is 66 percent, two-thirds width of the lot. That's where we came with 40 feet for this, because that would be two-thirds, which is, you know, taking a, the average of what you see for a stretch of 50-foot lots, and then applying that to 60 seemed logical, but as Commissioner Fletcher said, perhaps there's, you know, that's at the discretion of the, of the commission if there's a compromise or if that's already the compromise.
That's helpful in, in just, but there's some analysis we started at this point, and here's an average, and some are greater, some are less. Thank you.
So, do we feel like, is, just like keeping the discussion going, is there's a compromise on the width? Or do we, do we feel like we ought to keep with the compromise of 42 feet? What do you guys want to think about when we move, we start, we talk about the dormer?
I think what Ben's point is, I mean, if we, if we, if it goes from 46 to 42, then the bump outs are gone, and that's just something we'll have to, I mean, we see hundred, we see a lot of those, right? Without the bump outs, it's just, this is going to, what's going to happen, so.
Okay. And I, I guess to point out, the application is 42 feet at the front. It bumps out, just for clarity, it bumps out two feet on either side, and then back in to 40, and then narrows down even further at the rear. So, there's, there's some in and out, and there's not a, we're not 46, just, you know, train running all the way down the lot. It's, to be noted, I, I'm not disagreeing with the staff's analysis. There is analysis, and there's a percentage at play there, but, but I think, and, and we need to, our primary focus is on what's visible from the street, but that's a consideration. And if we, you know, 46 all the way back, I, I think would, would, would be, is a different, is a different animal than, than something that has some architectural ins, ins and outs. I'm not saying this is right. I'm just, I, I feel like proportions, rhythm of, of openings, and, and how the form is, form of the house ends up as constructed is generally better when it has more articulation, not less, and I think our guidelines speak to that, so.
And the first bump out is 12 feet back from the front of the porch, and the second one is 24 feet back from the front of the porch. Okay, well, let's, let's think about the...
Actually, I, I think that plan may be, if I'm reading the plan correctly, I think the house at the front, the porches are 18, 8 wide. The house at the front is 21 feet in width.
I was looking at the back. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and then, so you come in the stairs, you come in the front door and then up the stairs.
26 feet, yeah.
And that the, the further step back is to the rear, where it gets down to 40. The plans do show the mechanical units towards the front, and I think that's, you know, mainly to get the units under the stairs, but the guidelines are pretty specific, so we need to make sure that the...
Move that in the back.
That the, the applicant, and particularly, unless the applicant, that the builder, you know, is, is within the confines of the guidelines on the mechanical units, for sure, but that's another.
Well, let's talk about the dormer. Maybe we'll come back to that. What are you talking about?
My feeling on the, on the shed dormer is, yeah, this is a duplex, and it's, there's no, there's no getting around the fact that it's a duplex. I mean, if you were going to do a front-facing gable dormer, then, then I'd want to see a front-facing gable dormer, and I might consider something that was wider or, or two individual ones could, could maybe even more appropriate for this case. I feel like, I'm in agreement with staff that separated dormers here would be more in keeping with exactly what this is, which is an infill duplex. And I, as far as the separation, I mean, in doing the math, to the staff's recommendation, I think an 18-foot wide dormer is what's requested, and, or, yeah, if my math's right, which is one-third of the total width. Again, they probably were starting at 40 instead of 40. I started at 42. That's what we're measuring from, is the, the width of the front, which is 42. I think 18 is, is where you're at. I would, I'd guess that they're probably, it's 34, 34. Are you reducing by six feet? Think of the math, right? If you get three across the middle line, you don't have the fire issues that the applicants or that the designer is concerned with. You get three feet away from each other, there's, you know, some defense in the code with those things being that far apart from each other and the spread of fire. So, I think that answers that question.
Are you talking, we're just talking about the front dormer or both?
Correct. I, I think the front dormer was as visible from the street as, is, is, is under consideration.
What do you guys feel about the dormer? Agree with Ben, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so, any consensus about the width that we're just talking about, keep going back to that again?
Let, let's finish the dormer.
Okay.
To remove it, move it two feet back from the primary wall?
Yeah, and let me clarify. In doing the math, if the house remains 42 feet wide at the street, I think it's 34-foot wide dormer. If you reduce it by three feet, which would be from the middle, that gets to the staff's one-third of the total width, so it's, it's a total of a six-foot reduction if, for everybody's edification on that one. If you're approving staff's recommendation. Now, on to the, whether it meets the front wall or not, you know, I, I think I see that one in, in the similar way that, that the Neighborhood Association, Representative Neighborhood Association sees it, is that the front porch kind of envelops that, and as viewed in elevation, that form is not bothersome, and especially if you separate it out, it's not going to read as, again, my, my opinion, I, I know that typically that is, that's a pretty typical comment that we'll see about dormers, but I, I personally read that one in form more as, as, as the way that was demonstrated by the...
Okay, now, now you can go back to...
No, it's okay. I'm just, yeah, so, are we kind of leaning toward the 42 feet, then? Making that the width?
As a percent of total lot width, it's more than the average from the staff's analysis, which, which, I mean, you have to, you have to do some, you have to figure out something instead of just being arbitrary, where the guidelines certainly don't allow us to be arbitrary. I, I think 42 is, is not too far out of, of that on a total 60-foot wide lot. And again, I, I think the project is better for having some ins and outs along the side in, in breaking up the form and breaking up the mass than, than it is to be at 40 and deeper and longer. So, I'm, that's a long way of saying I don't have a problem with 42 feet.
That's 42 feet, front, at, at the front?
At the front as designed.
Okay. Okay. I'm asking for...
I'm open, certainly, to anybody else that disagrees. Did you have anything? Okay. All right, go ahead, Ben. Make sure you're clear, if you don't mind, and you think you will, but just on that width thing, that where we're, where we're measuring it from...
I want to hear further discussion about a party wall that extends through the porches.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We didn't, is that, was that one of the conditions, or?
It's not, I'm not sure it was. The connection between plan and, and elevation was apparent to the staff.
I will say, my first impulse was similar to the applicant's, just because of something I had done recently, too. But I think you said that we typically don't allow it, but, you know, my first thought was exactly the same thing, that, I had to do it for a code reason as well. So, at first, I thought, oh, yeah, that makes a lot of sense, but if it's something, I guess I, I could be educated... guess I, I could be educated differently if it's something we've always, I want to set a precedent, I guess I would say.
We haven't had any issues with the fire. We haven't had any issues with the fire. It hasn't been required by codes or the fire department.
Yeah.
But it's fine, we would think, staff would think it's fine in the back.
I mean, I'll, I'll speak to both, both, the house was designed, it has a particular style. And so what I'm about to say wouldn't work with that style, but there are many devices in plan that can answer this concern. I don't, I don't know, I'm not an expert on it, but I'm, I'm not sure that a porch would be, certainly fire can spread across a porch and between units, but I'm not sure that the code specifically speaks to that. There are more, there are several devices that you could use to avoid that, to not put this wall up. I just, I think in practice, it's awkward and it will be awkward in terms of you've got something that you want to be one, oh, yeah, we got to make, make sure the fire doesn't go and it just looks like you just stuck a wall in there. It's going to look exactly like that. I mean, I get it, I understand why it needs to be done and I understand the lot of people behind it. I would, I think the better design solution is rather, and this changes again stylistically what you're trying to do, is if that is a concern, then those need to be separated in for real, not with a wall. They need to be separate elements on two individual units would be my design opinion.
Two different porches, basically.
And/or you can separate from the ceiling up. That doesn't do as much to control the spread of fire admittedly, but that, this is a case where I think aesthetically on the front of the house, that's a big deal and I, we, some other opinions and or discussion about it, I think is in order.
Let me ask you this real quick, Robin, since we, since it wasn't, do we just, something, it's just like it'll be a stipulation we would add to it, I guess, since it wasn't something you brought up?
Yes, you can always add conditions at any time.
Okay, that's, that's what this would be. Were you about to say something?
No.
Ben's doing a great job on this one. I agree with all his comments on that wall as well.
One more thing on that firewall. So the facade is important, but if the builder or developer wanted to do it on the rear, would that be appropriate then? In terms of design?
I think there's a conflict here between, if I were sitting on that porch and my neighbor were sitting on that porch and there weren't a wall there, that's not exactly private space and I think I would want to feel like I was in semi-private space on my front porch. So I get that. I think it would be more desirable with the wall there and certainly it's safer with the wall there. So for that reason on the back, because those things are less reviewed, I don't, I'm not as concerned, but I am very concerned with it on the front, just purely from the form and kind of what it says about the street. You've got, sorry, you've got, you've got direct personal and professional experience with it. I'm, I'm certainly willing to entertain, you know, other, other points of view on it, that's just my, from the guidelines standpoint.
Well, I'm only just, I would just echo him basically what the applicant said. The time that the agency that had jurisdiction, this was not in Nashville, they had required it, not in every unit, but a specific type, so that's why my first impulse, it wasn't, you know, I wasn't taken aback by it at all, but, but, you know, if it's something that we're, something that we're not kind of approving or going for with the character that we have, then I'm, I'm okay with it, but, I don't know, kind of jumping around that. But basically, I, it didn't take me aback, I'll put it that way. Initially, when I first heard it, I was like, oh, yeah, I had to do that too, but if it's something that we typically don't do, I mean, I'm not, I'm not that strong-hearted toward it.
You, you just kind of got this wing that's going to stick out and come out, come out to the front porch. You're, on the one hand, you're wanting these two things to read equal. It's a wide facade and then there's this piece that just doesn't, that kind of doesn't translate. Again, stylistically, the punch, you know, separating the porches stylistically changes, changes the thing, but I...
Some, the time, the time we did it, it didn't feel, it was definitely an obstruction of the two neighbors and that was another thing that we were kind of looking for, but it just was kind of happened, you know, a side effect to it. But it didn't really read so much, I guess, because the way it was lined up with the columns and it feels like this might be similar, but, but like I said, I'm not, I'm not totally opposed to removing it. I just wasn't opposed to seeing it either, I guess.
I'm, I may be, it may cause me more heartburn than, than it needs to. I just, I don't know, it seems like an add-on that, I, trust me, the safety component of it, I get all that and there's some liability for sure involved there. I just, to see this over and over again, I'm bringing it up to make sure that we're good with that and we kind of know what we're getting in this, you know, the, many of the new applications we see are two-family units and so it won't be, certainly wouldn't, I don't think would be the last time that we might see something like that to solve a problem.
This is the only time we've fully seen it that we didn't disapprove it. Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yes, you've always disapproved it when you've seen it.
That's, that's what I was trying to say better. Yeah. Okay, Ben.
It kind of looked, I mean, reminds me of a treatment you'd see in a, in a high-rise new apartment or condo building, you know, have a little wing wall there and it's not, I don't think, I don't think I've seen this since I've been on the board, so I'd hate to start a precedent personally.
Okay. All right, I'll make, take a shot at this. I recommend approval of the application at 1515 McKinney Avenue, finding it meets the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Overlay zoning, or zoning overlay with the following conditions. The height of building, height of the building is reduced by two feet. Staff approves the color of the roof and material of windows, doors, porch, floor, front steps and paving. The front dormer be divided into two dormers, no greater than one-third, and by my math, that's fourteen feet or, right at fourteen feet in width. And that there's a walkway connecting the front porch to the street. The HVAC units shown on the plans in the forward third of the house be moved to the midpoint or behind. And that either the, that the, just continued concern on the applicant's part of spread of fire, that an alternate solution for separating the porches be administratively approved at, by staff. And that the firewall separating the front porch is not in keeping with rhythm and proportion, rhythm of openings in the Conservation Overlay guidelines.
Did you, did you the width?
I got it by not mentioning it.
Oh, just to be exactly like they said it?
I mean, as presented, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. It's forty-two, forty-two feet at the front and that the bump outs are...
Oh, as presented, not changing the width, okay.
Did you include that area should be moved up?
Yes, she did. Okay. Any, we have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Let me, let me further clarify on the width. Forty-two feet being within or very close to the average or the percentage of average within the district of, you know, lots are typically fifty feet wide and in the, you know, in the sixty, mid-sixty to seventy percent range of that, finding that because this house does not push that envelope of forty-six feet all the way back, but has some articulation of the facade in the side elevation, that, you know, has, has given some deference to a little bit wider, you know, in lieu of forty feet, that forty-two feet is acceptable.
Does the second still stand with that amendment?
Yeah, I think that was just clarification, yeah, no, no change.
A little clarification too. So, I mean, we're obviously approving this plan, you're not, your motion isn't saying forty-six, this house can be forty-six feet wide.
No, as submitted, yes, for clarity, as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
This is an application to demolish a non-contributing structure and to construct a new one, a new one and one-half story house on the lot. The context of this particular lot is also largely non-contributing, but that is pretty isolated within an area that otherwise has very strong historic character. The proposed new infill will be thirty feet six inches tall with a clipped gable on the front, of a front gabled form that brings eve down to twenty-three feet and the house will be thirty-four feet wide. Staff finds that the height and scale of the proposed house are appropriate and compatible with some of the historic context nearby. The house will have a covered parking area at the rear underneath the main roof. Staff finds that this is appropriate in this location because it won't be highly visible as it's tucked in between, behind the side-facing gables. It doesn't unnecessarily increase the size of the house like it's just added on or it's not just added on. And also look, because the lot is very shallow and on a street with a very street grade and without an alley at the rear, so this seemed like the best logical solution. However, staff did find that the, the front facade, the house has its front entrance set at the back of a sixteen-foot deep recessed porch, which is there. Staff finds that with this configuration, the house doesn't have the clear, prominent front facade that you see typical of historic houses. The importance of appropriate orientation or the presentation of an unmistakable primary facade, the entrance to the house that addresses the street, that's on par with, with height and scale and compatibility of new construction. The proposal is otherwise appropriate in materials, proportion and rhythm of openings, setbacks. Staff recommends approval of the application to demolish the non-contributing structure and construct a new one and a half story house with attached parking, with conditions that the primary entrance be more prominent to match the orientation of surrounding historic houses, that the roof color and final selection of windows and doors are administratively approved, that the HVAC location is administratively approved. Meeting those conditions, staff finds that the proposal meets the design guidelines for the Lockland Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Okay, any, any questions for Sean, for staff? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward and speak regarding this project?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm the architect, John Root, seven fifty-three Aloe Way Street. And I, we've been working with staff on a couple of different things around the house and we, I think we've narrowed down to one singular issue and that's the prominence of the front door and it's somewhat of a matter of opinion. And I think a couple considerations when we first designed this house for this lot, obviously, there's a severe amount of slope, sloping to the street and there's no sidewalk, so it's a little bit of a unique lot in one of our historic districts that probably requires a little different response. And to minimize that, you know, the original house, the first picture's a really good one, because there's a lot of foundation showing there up and as you, as you approach the street, it's, you, you basically come down the sidewalk, the, the existing driveway to come to the street. So the approach itself to this, to this, to this house is unique in that you approach the house from the corner and not from the direct street location. So that, that in essence is, kind of drove the design for the porch to the corner of the house. And we wanted to accomplish a couple of things with the porch in that we wanted to make it usable enough, large enough for two chairs and still get in and out of the house without maneuvering around those chairs. And we kept it at the front wall of the house because as, as you can see, the closer you get to the street, the larger the foundation gets at that porch. And so we wanted to really minimize that look from the street to kind of keep in character with, with the other homes going in the neighborhood. So we felt like it was a matter of opinion as far as what prominent means and we felt like that the front door was very prominent. And it's, it's prominent in a way that it complements the uniqueness of the corner porch. And we could also do some other things to make it prominent, like change the color of the door. So with, having said all that, I think that's the only issue that we have left for this design is the, the prominence of and location of the front door. Now, if you look at the side elevation, we did, with the symmetry of the house and that kind of gable that bisects the, the main ridge, it's kind of the circulation spine of the home, we did fill in the back porch area, kind of underneath the roof, but we felt that we didn't, it didn't look horrible because it was hidden back behind that gable. And we could do that easily in the front, but then again, the symmetry of the home, we felt it would look a little off and the, and the porch, obviously, the depth of the porch decreases and, and back to the plan, I threw some chairs on there to kind of show you the, to give you a scale with how big that porch is. Again, we wanted to maintain its usability and try to have some sort of interaction with the street, even though there's not a sidewalk there. And again, it's, it's kind of a unique lot in that it slopes away from, up away from the street. So we're taking all those characteristics into consideration. We felt that the sixteen-foot deep porch in this manner, on this, this particular design, and the fact that you approach the home from the corner, not head-on, creates a very prominent entry for the home. So be more than happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Any questions from applicant? Okay, thanks, John. Open public hearing? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion?
I think it's a, I mean, I agree with the architect or the applicant, I think it's a very unique site. I think the, I think the design works well and I do think that there's some treatment that could be made, if they're willing to explore painting the door, something like that, to make it work. I certainly understand staff's concern about it, but I just think this is a very unique situation and we don't, never really see many of these and there's a valid reason for it. So I'm okay with that, that door there personally.
This may be, I guess, a question for us and staff. I think, you know, if you have transitional Victorian, I'm, yeah, I'm not sure what exactly you would, you would call this, but the scale of it from the front is small, seems smaller than, than a lot of the solutions we, we would typically see. And so, you know, for that reason, it brings a certain set of constraints that could you take a front porch and put it all the way across here and make the door more pri, I mean, there, there certainly enough, many other ways that you could do this and pull it off. And I, I guess I wonder in that Lillian Street in, in the Lockland Springs East End Neighborhood is not, you know, it's different because it mostly is a post-World War II, little, little boxes and, and, you know, some of them are even fortunate to have a porch stuck on them if, if at all. And so I'm, I'm curious if this by its nature is maybe a, a solution that might not be appropriate in other places, might be appropriate here with, with its setback in this sort of Charleston, and I don't want to put architecture on it that's not there, but this more Charleston style, style porch is, we're not in Charleston, but that it might be appropriate in this, in this instance.
I actually, I'm thinking of a house that, that is sort of a Tudor house that's in that same area, that actually has that side entrance, well, has that side porch, but the, the door, the front door actually goes in from the, the side of the porch. So, I mean, I, I mean, I can think of one house that's very similar to this and it's not, this is better than that.
And I think that would, that'd be a way to get the door closer, but maybe not a more desirable way to get the door closer to the street.
It's not very prominent.
Not at all.
For those prominent halls.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move approval of 1113 Lillian Street. Move approval to demolish a non-contributing house and construct a new one, one-half story house as submitted with the following staff recommendations. The roof color and final selections of windows and doors be administratively approved, and location HVAC be administratively approved as well.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, any discussion? Okay, all, do you have some question?
Yeah, I just, maybe, I'd, I'd like to enter, I guess, for the record, that the door being 16 foot back, foot back, I think, has everything to do with the scale, the size and scale and, and location of this within the district.
Thank you, thanks, Ben. Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. The next one, 2509 Natchez Trace.
2509 Natchez Trace is an application for new, one of three new residences on the vacant lot. The street setback of the proposed house is approximately one foot forward of the neighboring contributing home up the hill, 2507 Natchez Trace. Staff has therefore requested that the new building setback match that of the neighboring house. The proposal meets the design guidelines for height and scale, roof orientation and proportion and rhythm of openings. Staff requests approval of the siding material, windows, doors, garage doors, and the color of roofing material. The siding reveal is marked as five inches on the house and seven inches on the outbuilding, and staff asks that the siding exposure be at a uniform five inches for both structures. The outbuilding as drawn has an eve height of 11 feet. Staff requests this be brought down to 10 feet or less to meet the design guidelines. And the dormers on the outbuilding do not sit off the exterior wall. Staff has also requested that they be redrawn as roof dormers that sit back two feet from the wall. Staff recommends approval of the infill at 2509 Natchez Trace with the conditions that the street setback match that of the neighboring home at 2507. The eve height of the outbuilding be reduced to 10 feet or less, and the outbuildings dormers be roof dormers instead of wall dormers, sitting off the wall by less than two feet. That lap siding for both structures have a five-inch maximum reveal. That staff approve the siding material, windows, doors, and garage doors and roofing color, and that the finished floor height be consistent with adjacent historic houses.
Okay, any, any questions for Paul? Okay, thanks, Paul. Is applicant here and like to speak?
He is.
Okay, come forward and state your name and address.
At 3317 East Lake Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. I'm in agreement with the staff recommendation on this, this property. I, I wanted to maybe talk with, have you consider an element after the other two are introduced?
Okay, but for 2509, you're, you agree with staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any questions to the applicant?
Would, I guess, would our consideration, once we see the other two, be for this or not?
No.
Okay.
No.
I just wanted to be clear.
Okay, thank you.
Unwind our motion.
Oh, did you have something else, Paul, or, okay. Public hearing, or are you with him? Okay, all right, closed public hearing, discussion or motion?
Move approval of 2509 Natchez Trace. New construction following staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, a motion, second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, 2509 Natchez Trace is, okay, 2511 Natchez Trace.
I'm going to jump one to present them in order chronologically. And 2509, I wrote a half, I think the applicant's calling it 2509B, also has the, the same conditions that the applicant has also agreed with.
Okay, all right. So does everybody, 2509B is just like 2509A, and the same recommendations from the staff and the applicant agrees with all the recommendations? Any questions for staff or the applicant for that matter? Okay, all right, thanks, Paul. Open, closed, open public hearing, closed public hearing? Motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt staff recommendation for 2511 Natchez Trace.
Okay, second. All in favor?
That was 2509 and a half.
Yeah, 2509 and a half. Did I say B? I may have said B.
Okay, sorry.
All right, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so now we're 2511.
2511 is the third of the three proposed residences. This is, this one has an attached garage instead of detached. The proposed ridge height is 30 feet from the finished floor height. The other two were 24 and a half feet, 27 feet from grade, which matches the neighboring contributing home, a bungalow up the hill. The overall height of this would be close to 32 feet from grade at the front. Viewed from the street, from this angle, the lot does slope to the alley at the left, but the, the ridge height is five feet taller than the other, than 2509 and 2509B. So staff's recommendation is that the ridge height of this building be reduced to 27 feet from grade to be more compatible with the neighborhood context. On this elevation, the right side, staff requests that two window openings be added on the second story here and here to break up the long expanse of wall area there. As for the attached garage, the commission has approved attached garages in the past where they are at a basement level at the rear of the building and in a typical location for an outbuilding, and this proposal meets those criteria. In summary, staff recommends approval of 2511 Natchez Trace with the conditions that the ridge height is reduced to 27 feet from grade, two window openings be added to the second story of the right elevation, and that staff approve siding material, roofing color, porch columns, windows, doors, and garage doors, and that the finished floor height shall be consistent with that of neighboring historic houses.
Okay, any questions for Paul?
Paul, this, evidently this site has a lot more slope than the others.
That's correct. And the applicant does wish to discuss the, the height recommendation with you.
All right, thank you, Paul. Just state your name and address again for the record.
Randy Robinson at 3317 East Lake Drive. Yes, I'm in agreement with the recommendations, other than I would like you to consider the height requirement in this case. I did a streetscape, which is, we actually shot the grades, so this is scalable, accurate as far as the, the, the proposed project. And from right to left, there's an eight-foot drop in grade across the, the three houses. So 2511 being on the low side of that and being three foot taller than, than the, than the requirement, it doesn't, it actually doesn't appear quite that tall. And that's what I'm proposing, that we are able to get the three foot.
Do you know about the house on the left side of that, by chance? Of the, of, maybe it's 2513, I don't know.
The left, of course, it continues down, the grade continues down. I don't know if that, I don't know if that's a contributing house or...
It's a contributing house, the upper left of the context picture. It's across the alley there. It's a shorter home, I think 22, 23 feet, and, and downhill significantly.
So it'd be a big discrepancy between those two.
Which, which, upper left, yeah. Right, right. It looks like... Across, there's actually a, to the left at first thing is an alley, then that house, so there is quite a bit of separation between those two.
It appears from, there's a tree, a side yard, and a fence that gives some relief there, but I, I mean, I, with, but in, as we're considering the total picture of height and compatibility, you can, at least it appears from the photograph that there's some, there's a pretty big tree there. It doesn't sit three feet or even 10 feet off the alley. It appears to be a little bit more than that, again, from, do we have a area or the...
There's an overhead in your packet.
Okay, yeah, I thought I saw that, so. Maybe not as much as I've described. If I'm reading the alley, the alley right, but I think certainly there's a large tree and, and a little bit of a side yard there.
It is, yeah, it's, you don't really recognize that house. It's not a real parent, the, the house to the left, so I don't know if it does read, in being that the grade's continuing down even more severely on that side.
And Paul, you said it is contributing, that house?
That's correct.
The one on the left?
Can we go back to the, yeah, thanks? Is it upper, upper left of the 2511 in that photo?
Yes, the, the, I think approximately, correct me if I'm wrong, but that existing sidewalk is roughly the, the walk that will be leading to 2511.
That'd be about the elevation of, of the 2511, yes. Yeah, you, we're kind of looking at it upstream, we're, you're, part of that camera angle's almost at 2509, right? And you're, we're looking down the street. That's really not the front elevation of...
That's right.
Of the neighbor.
I can maybe add a little bit to our thinking on this. Typically, what you see is, is homes are similar in height from the finished floor to the ridge. So if the grade drops, the house might appear to be shorter. If the grade rises, the house might appear to be taller. Generally, they don't just fill in because it's a lower grade, you get more height, or it's a higher grade, you get less. So that's what we were kind of looking at it from.
What's that large structure, Paul, in this photograph? There's something in the upper right. It's a two-story structure, maybe? You see that? Across the street?
It's pretty deep. Is that right? Pretty long?
Yeah. Is that a home? Or is that like a...
Yeah, it's all residential here, in that, in that image.
And then the home that's, I guess, on the other side of 2509, is that, what, do you know the height of that home?
The one down the hill? Oh, excuse me, up the hill. 2507 is 27 feet.
Okay. Thank you. So that's kind of where you got your benchmark? I think Paul mentioned, there are some homes in the neighborhood at 30 feet, is that?
The, the range goes up to 29 feet overall. There are a couple of examples, not, not on Natchez Trace, though, that they're in a couple of different locations nearby.
Okay, any, any more question? You have something? All right, thanks. Open public hearing? Okay. State your name and address.
Hi, my name's Suzanne Elmer. I live at 3003, excuse me, I'm sorry, 3003 Blake Moore Avenue. I actually live in the neighborhood. I'm also on the board of the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Association, and I'm also a Realtor representing Randy, so I wear several hats. Just one comment I'd like to make is as you're facing the properties, the grade is, you know, going down right to left. And to the far left, so on the 2511 property, you are divided from the next property by that perpendicular alley to Natchez Trace. And so it reads much more like these homes connected to the 2507 property are more like a block than the home to the direct left of this one. So just in terms of just how you orient and how you view that, seems to be visually more of a block. The Hillsborough West End Board also supported Randy on his designs, as well as Berkeley Allen and just, just other support in the neighborhood. The Natchez Trace neighbors had several people with a former, former councilperson, Ginger Hauser, meet, saw all of Randy's designs, that sort of thing, were, were really comfortable and in support of the design, so.
Thank you. Okay, closed public hearing, discussion?
I guess a follow-up for staff. And a curiosity relative to the completely different zoning overlay districts and styles, that this house has more kind of a corner, and granted, there's an alley next door, but did the staff discuss at all the setback of, you've got a, a porch all the way across the front, and the setback of the front door from the front facade of the house? Was that of concern, is that of, as, of as significant concern in this district as it would be in, in another district?
And you mean the depth of the porch or the setback of...
The setback of the front door from the front of the porch appears to be in the 18 to 20-foot range? From the, from the face of the, of the porch? I mean, it just depends on where you're measuring from. Is it from the front of the house, from the front of the porch? This is, I mean, it's a question really in relation to the previous Lakeland Springs. And I don't, they're not equivalent because it's a two-story house, completely different design, but is this one viewed as prominent enough because of the, the orientation of the porch and the entry, the fact that the porch wraps around the front, et cetera?
Yes, yes, I'm following you out. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I will say that I'm still a little concerned about if it's the tallest building next to the contributing house, and even with the slope, that it would overpower it even more, even though, you know, maybe it is separate, just for you guys to, to think, consider that, that it only gets taller and, and that's a smaller building.
I'm in agreement with you that the transition needs to be a little bit more subtle between that house and the contributing one.
Let me make sure I'm reading this correctly, in terms of the elevations and where, what we're measuring and where we're measuring from and to, because the front gable on the house seems appropriately scaled in this elevation of the three. That, that doesn't, is not, that seems appropriate for the district and for, for, in concert with these other houses, and if, if the elevation showed the house next door, I think that would certainly be viewed as within a compatible range. So as we get kind of a third of the way back, the house then, there's a side-facing gable that peaks at, that's where the 30 feet's measured to, am I, is that correct? Or are we talking about different, different heights?
The, the measurements that, that we're using are, they're from the, the front, so, you know, there actually will be more showing as the grade slopes to the, the back, but that's...
And so we're, we're measuring from grade at the front to the top of the side-facing gable facing the alley at 30 feet.
That's correct.
Any more questions or discussion? If, if we... If the slope were changed on the side-facing gable to meet, I guess, to, to meet up with the front of the house, that would...
meet up with the front of the house, that would, would that be about what we're, would that approach the 27 feet? I'm just trying to figure out in my mind and in scale what, what would, what it would come to. And I'm looking, I'm looking from the right set elevation, if you brought the, brought those two down, where it seems like we're getting in the neighborhood of, of a three-foot reduction.
Five-foot reduction, huh? What is he now, 32? No. 30, 30. Oh, that's yours is 32.
From, well, from, from grade, it will be 32. From finished floor is the, is 30 feet. The, our recommendation was 27 feet from grade. So it is a reduction in, in about five feet.
I get, can, can the applicant just maybe walk through why a detached garage didn't work on this particular site?
Yeah, I, there's a couple things in, you know, this was kind of a unique opportunity to be able to build three houses together. And being sensitive to the overlay, I was kind of excited about it because this is kind of an opportunity to create three houses that comply, but don't look like they've been built like a big development, like they have been there. I, I try to do that on all my projects to where the, really fits in with the neighborhood. And with that said, that was one, one part of it was not to just have three garages in the back, to, to where it changed it up a little bit different. And, you know, the entrances, the dormers and so forth, I really tried to play off individually instead of like this is a, a development. With that said too, even on the height, and as Paul had mentioned, I think it, the other houses are, if you just go from floor elevation, just for, to keep all the apples, compare apples to apples, are 27 and this one's 30. So it is a difference of three feet is what we're looking at, is from a way I understand it. And, and you know, of course, the elevations, if you try to drill down a little further on that, being that the slope of the land, actually on the high side, probably would be less than two feet on any of these houses. We'd probably be down to a foot and a half or, or somewhere in there. So it just depends on where you're measuring from. But so, you know, that's why I use the floor, floor to floor, floor to ridge. The other thing to consider, I think Ben was maybe looking at is that ridge is about a third or almost halfway back off of the prominent gable that you're reading off the street. So even though that's, and that's the high point, that's the 30 feet, but it's set back almost halfway back in the house at that point.
And your ridge height on the 29, 2509?
Or 24.6, is that right?
From, from floor height, that's correct.
Yes, floor height.
And then I, I added the foundation height to get the, the height from grade to compare it to the, the context, to the GIS data.
Are, are the grade, distance from grade to first floor about the same for all the these three homes, or they vary?
Grade, all about the same.
Okay.
Yes.
So anyway, so 24.6 versus 30.
Okay. Sorry, yeah, I, I am, yeah, so we are, actually, I guess you are comparing a 24, 25 to a 30.
Okay.
Yeah, apples to apples, sorry.
And he's willing to give you a 27 from first, from grade, but not, so that would be?
25.
Is that what you're thinking, Paul?
Are you, are you?
From first floor, from?
Going to 27 feet from floor height instead of from grade?
No, I mean, I was just thinking, I'm just, I'm just asking what you had in mind.
Yeah, my review, our review was to get it to a similar height from grade as the, the other two.
But in.
To 27 from grade.
Okay, so if these are 24, 24 and a half from first floor, what would that equate to from first floor to your 27? What's that, about 25, is that about a foot and a half or what? Your grade to first floor is what? Just approximately?
On this house, it's, it's a foot.
Okay, all right, okay. So the other homes are 25 and a half.
24 and a half, yeah.
Right, and you're, you're suggesting 27, grade to ridge. And he's at 31?
32.
32, okay. Trying to get it.
I'm, I'm working at a disadvantage here, but I want to, along these lines, I'm using, not a scale to, to figure this out, but I'm reading, I'm actually reading on the elevations and whether these are printed out to scale or not, you know, remains to be seen, but or this is not, this is not the accurate way to go about this. I'm sure the staff has done this, but I'm reading on, the first two that we've gone to, 28 by the, by the drawings.
28, how'd you get that?
I, well, actually, I'm, I'm comparing drawings that were printed out at a 1/8 scale on 11 by 17 from one to the next. And so I'm accepting that 32 is the measure on the house we're looking at. And if I compare that over to the others, that translates to about a four-foot difference. Again, this is, it's scientific with the tools we're given, assuming these drawings are printed at the same scale, which they may or may not be. And I, I just want to make sure that if the applicant, you know, is, is thinking he's going to be at 27 and the drawings are drawn at 28, that's going to create a problem in the field and then now we're, we're, we're using that as a judge for, for the next one down. I just want to make sure that we're all working off, we're all on the same, same wavelength here as to where we're measuring from and what we're measuring to and what sort of stipulations we're, we're putting on it, so that we can understand the drawings in the context one to the next and in the context of existing historic contributing structures. It seems a four-foot difference and I, Paul is intimately familiar with this, I just want to, am I seeing that, reading the drawings differently than your analysis of, and your discussions with the applicant?
I think, I think they're to scale. I think they're, I, I didn't detect any difference from, from one to the next, but.
I'm comparing the one to the next and I think, I just want to make sure. Not seeing it differently than, than, than others are, than you did.
Are you 28 from grade?
I'm, I'm 28 from the line at the front of the front porch, which is, I'm considering kind of grade.
So in your front elevation in 2509.5, that, that line to the ridge is 28 feet?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of what I.
It says roof ridge 24.6. You're saying there's another two and a half feet of something?
I think maybe, do you mind coming, applicant coming back? I mean, you know, it's your drawings that.
Exactly, yeah. The streetscape, you know, I, I mean, it's been printed and I've emailed it and so forth, so I'm not sure what scale it is, but it is to scale. In other words, it, there's an eight-foot drop in elevation across the 150 feet, that's accurate. The separation between homes is accurate, the size and scale of each home is accurate. So, but I know it is hard trying to scale off of these three productions, especially, you know, at eighth inch scale or sixteenth inch scale. But the proportions and, and heights and so forth are accurate.
Well, like that, I'm, I'm just, you know, if I'm saying, Ben, I don't want to get it too.
No, I don't want to, I just want to make sure that if they are that different, I'm, I'm.
Oh, you, you know, well, now that I've, I didn't even have these in front of me, there is, I could, it is a five-foot difference between, you know, in height.
Between the two?
Between the 20.
Between 2509E and 2511?
Yes.
Five feet.
Right.
This one is five feet taller.
Right. And my only thought was the, you know, the drop in grade was about four feet between those houses.
And Paul, you've recommended reducing it five feet to match up? Okay, gotcha.
Okay. Any more questions about the drawings before he?
As long as you're up there, I mean, is there, is there a height that you're okay with, with dropping it? Is there?
Whatever you recommend. My only concern is as, as we drop the ridge, you start to affect the slope and visually that has, that, you know, the, there's a similarity to the neighborhood with the slopes that we've used. So that'd be my only concern as far as trading that off.
Okay, thanks.
But it definitely has a different look on the side and back.
Yeah, and, and that, you know, that is, it's not a true corner lot, but there is that alley, so it, we did kind of use that entry as part of the look to that approach of the house.
Okay, I haven't made too many comments this meeting, so I'm going to try.
No requirement.
Just sitting back, kind of, yeah, listening. But there, I, there seems to be value in that of the grade change and, and again, because of that alley, and you have that separation between the, the contributing and this new infill. And the streetscape does show where it's consistency to the other two buildings that are being constructed. So that has some merit. And also looking at the elevations, because the roofs are, have variation of heights, it doesn't seem to me that the 32-foot ridge height is pronounced. It's more, you have some variations to that, so it doesn't look like you've got a full 32-foot all the way back to the, back of the lot. So not so adverse to the, the five-foot difference between 27 and 32 because of the grade.
I understand that logic, but I'm also looking at the neck, I mean, I think the five-foot reduction is, is, is too great, in my opinion. But I think we need to take into consideration the relationship between that and the transition to the contributing structure on the other side. But again, I think the five feet is too much. If we can come up with maybe a compromise and the transition would be not quite as much.
I agree.
Want to throw out a compromise?
Yeah, three feet.
You want to reduce it by three?
Reduce the, yes.
And you're talking from grade? So it'd be 32, 27, three foot?
No, I'm, I'm going from the finished grade of the house, not first floor.
Right, so you're saying the 32 from the ridge?
Okay, now, wait, okay, hold on, okay.
You want to drop that by three feet?
Yes.
That ridge?
Yes.
So from 30 feet to 27 feet?
On the ridge line?
Looking at drawing.
From the ridge line, yes.
Looking at the front elevation.
To the first, first floor. It's drawn at 30?
This is, this is 30.
Right, that's 30 right there.
Yep, from here.
I'll show.
To here.
So taking that down from 30 feet to 27. Any, what do you think, Ben? Any discussion about that?
This doesn't relate necessarily to that issue in terms of the height as measured from finished floor, but because the grade can vary at the front porch, and this is total perceived height, you might consider measuring it from the grade at the front of the front porch and call it 28 instead of 27.
I can, I can agree with that compromise.
Sounded really smart, Ben.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, if we could make it sound smarter, we could do that too. All right, do you want to, do you want to run with the motion?
I'm going to let Ben.
Go ahead, you got it.
All right, okay. All right, we will, I think we're in agreement with staff recommendation on the 2511 Natchez Trace, with the exception of the ridge height be brought down to no more than 28 feet from grade at the front of the house.
Second.
And all the other?
Yeah, all the other staff recommendations.
Okay, and we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Do we have a second?
I'm, yeah.
I'm sorry, yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. So we, no preliminary SP review today?
No. Next, we have the rules of order and procedure that you, you've had the last couple of months. And this essentially is changing the requirements for notice of the meetings. This was originally written back when we didn't have all the resources we have now with the web. People, if they wanted to see a staff recommendation, they had to come to the office and we pull it out for them and, and show it to them that way. So this is taking into account that now, conceivably, anyone in the entire world could receive notice of the meeting if they so desired. So we'd like to take out some of those requirements. What you requested a couple of months ago is that the, that, the list that we have that you've already approved a couple of years ago, I think, maybe longer than that, of what can be administratively reviewed, be included here. So we've done that. But we've also just made a couple of changes so that if someone has a garage that perfectly meets all of those requirements that you've added to the design guidelines as italicized information, that that could be administratively approved, since it obviously meets what you've found to be appropriate. And that's essentially what this is. It's an opportunity to save papers, save resources, save on postage, since everyone can get it online.
Okay, do we, so do we need to just make a motion to agree to that? Does anybody need more time or do you, can we make a motion to approve? Or no? I mean, if you have a question, question's good too.
I guess because the other, I remember one of the commissioners was just, had some kind of recommendation for the notification number two. Do you remember what, what there was a question about on that?
There were a lot of questions. I don't remember which one.
Specifically, no, okay.
Specifically.
It's like who we should go out to, if I recall.
I think too, there were some misunderstandings, that there was a feeling like we were changing the ordinance and the requirements in the ordinance. This does not do any of that at all. And again, it's not lessening who can, who receives notice, because anyone in the world can sign up to receive notice.
For the committee, this clears up both administrative and perhaps a legal loophole that if somebody didn't like the way that they were noticed, they could issue a way that they were noticed, not necessarily something that was particular to the specifics of their case. And in addition to all the other, in this day and age of tight budgets, cost-saving measures, that this, this kind of assists the staff in, in the work that we want them to be doing, which is reviewing cases and not chasing people down.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you guys. And what is this administration, that administrative permit issued for prior?
That's something that's in your packets every month. We include it on the agenda just in case you have some questions or want to discuss anything, but it's just a list that you receive every month of what's been, what's been permitted.
One last thing then for the commissioners, if you guys could, we always, every month, and I'm, I'm just as guilty, we have at the day before, we don't seem to have quorum because we just haven't responded back. So if we can, unless you have a better motion, just if, the second you hear, if you could just hit a reply back so that they will know if it's a quorum or not, because if they ever. ever don't have a quorum, it's a kind of short notice to try to change the, it's always kind of a short notice to try to change to date. So as soon as you get that, unless anybody wants to think of a better way to get the yes or no back out there.
I want you to call everybody.
Okay. It'll be, it'll be right as you're driving. Any, any recommendations, or is everybody okay with it?
I think the current system is, is fine, just you need to email Devon and with copy and, or email Devon and Robin so we can make sure, so we know what's what.
So as soon as you get it, if you can do that. All right.
Thank you for that.
I'm going to adjourn.
One more thing before you go. Don't forget March 6, Old House Fair, 9 to 3. If you have any ideas on promotion, sponsors, exhibitors that should be there, let me know. March 6.
Oh, this is not a meeting thing, but this worked fine for me, by the way.
I think we keep going with it. How, did you use it?
I couldn't log in the wifi. Did you get in the wifi?